We'll call the city council meeting for the city of Shoto for December fifth to order. All those present will rise and do the pledge of allegiance. So, good evening, everybody in-house tonight. I have myself, I have councilman Merja, councilman Howard, and councilman Kukoli. I have clerk Brown Felder here in the uh on the public section. We have Brian Colesworthy from the county planner. Bill Spectold, Drew from Lions Club, and Rich Luskey. So. Um, first time that would be minutes from twenty-one November.
That we approve?
I have a motion from councilman Merja.
I'll say it.
A second from councilman Kukoli. Changes or did corrections?
They look good.
Hearing none? Those in favor?
I.
opposed? Minutes passed. Minutes are approved. Anyone leaving the state? When? It's over here. They moved that team. When?
Fifteenth through the eighteenth.
Oh, okay. So you're not gone during. Councilor, you're home?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not leaving the state. I'm gonna go out of town for a couple days, but that's about it.
Yeah, I'll be in Fosman over Christmas, but.
Okay.
Um.
We're currently, go ahead and keep stamping those things and I'll move on. You're going out of Staples. I made sure. Operator Aaron with the stapler there, councilman Howard. I made sure before I came back here, I had plenty of staples. Um, Drew, while we're doing this, I know you're here to comment on. Yep, the floor is yours if you want to come and take it and give us an update on what you're here to talk to us about. We're gonna skip ahead while we're getting some other documents in place and have um Drew give us an update on.
I'm representing the Lions Club tonight, and so I'm going to talk about um an update on the tennis courts and the pool filters because I haven't done that yet.
Good.
And um on vacation for a while. So um the tennis courts are completed as far as we could get them by the fall.
Alright.
Um, the stripping companies and uh people that do surfacing were booked up fall, and it took us a while to find a company to do that. And Dylan Isaacson has um a gentleman that he knows in Fosman that probably ended up working with. So in the meantime, um and even after we have the surface done and the striping on, which we are planning to get on a business uh list. Um, he has asked that there are no wheels in on the the courts. So meaning no bicycles, no skateboard, scooters, um um skate shoes, anything of that sort at any time to get out there. And I have signage being made by Badger Trax.
Okay.
And so that'll go on the it was um all handicapped accessible vehicles will be allowed, so that's not a problem. So um yeah, the skates just the wheels cause wear and tear, but even though as the surface is on, we're gonna set that not the um case. Um, new basketball hoops are up. We do have new tennis nets and coast ordered. They're in storage right now, so those will come out in spring.
I know that Jill Allen's tracked me down and said she has basketball nets.
Okay.
For purchase for or on hand for the new basketball, and she was going to drop them on Pierced City Hall on one of her trips to town.
Okay, really nice. Great. Yes. Um, we do have memorial signs that will be going up. One is for her son and one was for um Veronica Griftenberg. They were both tennis, tennis sports athletes, and we had that memorials and everything. So we are working on some overall signage that have done right.
There's the three.
So we'll be putting these things up on the fence. And I have a sign from the land L W C and Grant. That is a lifetime sign that has to go up on the tennis court fence as well. They said they don't need to put one on the pool because it'll have a stream and.
Right, also.
No, um, the other thing is uh we're working on the first part of installation of the pool filters. And uh it was quite uh an eventful day when we had to pull those two eight hundred fifty pound.
I wondered about that when they came over and got them that day.
Yeah, um, old filters out of there and um my gentleman Brandon who comes from Fosman, he was very, very impressed with the help of Mike Magels and Colin like and out of the peak walked um Chad Bama and um, Mike turns around and goes, oh, you still have that piece of equipment? He goes, oh, sure, it's at my dad's. And Brandon's like, okay. And then here comes Danny Isaacson, and we needed longer forks. He drives by and can you get those forks? Yeah. So Brandon was like, wow, you just, it's amazing what.
It takes a village.
Oh, it did. That day, that's why you didn't even wish to do that because those were big things. Steve probably remembers putting them in. Um, I don't know if you were there or not.
By myself, uphill both ways.
That's that's why you retired.
So yes, they were resting horribly. I mean, things inside were falling apart and lying in the sand over the winter, and I really didn't think we'd get the pool of them last summer. It was that scary. It was, they were just a mess. So um, the new ones are in. They're a type of not really plastic, but they are not metal. And the filter material is glass, so we have glass pedals and glass sand in there. And um Brandon has to come back again with more parts and elbows and tools because the bolts are plastic type of bolt. And so he needed a special torque wrench, but we didn't want to torque the bolts anyway in the cold. So um he'll be coming back, and we've talked about that today with him because we thought we were missing a part, and it was buried in the middle of the pallet of the media that I had to go dig out with somebody today and thank goodness, because that was an expensive part that runs the whole works. We didn't know where it was. So so um he'll come back and then the final installation um will take place in May when we actually have water in the pool and run water through the system. He goes back and starts my coordinator stuff as well. So it's quite a process and I believe it's time.
Cool. Anything else we could help you with?
No, I'm just watching the budget really closely. I'm um just to make sure that I'd like to have some leftover for them. Make sure that they're stripping and cost for the tennis court. I know there's some leftover uh thanks to the kindness of Dylan and Isaacson um for that as well, too. So anyway, anybody have questions? It's it's been a long project. I need to stop my.
No, I want, thank you for coming and updating us.
How much, how much was the grant, Drew? Do you have that?
Um, well, it's it's broken down into parts, so.
Okay.
You know what? I don't know if I have an overall total on you.
Well, even if you want to give me the parts, I can, I can do math.
I gotta think it's somewhere in the two fifty-eight, two fifty-seven range, if I'm not mistaken.
That was kind of what I was thinking was that the, and the total cost of the project.
Well, we've we've applied for um additional funds twice.
Okay.
So it's up there more than that.
Okay.
But whether it gets used or not, I don't know that, but.
Is that a use it or lose it, or is that a?
We we have until twenty twenty-five sometime in twenty twenty-five, but we should have it all finalized as of this, the spring of twenty-four.
Okay.
We got held up in COVID and that, yeah, a lot of people not working and.
Well, we had a long.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Drew. We'll hop back to the new business and bursting up tonight. You guys want copies? There's three different maps here. It's, we're gonna open discussion about street lighting changes in Shoto. This is by no means an action item. This is by no means uh there's three sections. Um, Brian, there's northeast, southeast, and southwest. So there's this section here, too. Um, we'd had some folks come to us and asked about doing some updating of the lights in Shoto, adding some more lights. We went to Northwestern Energy. Uh Jess Griniger is the engineer that takes care of these things. He's had it done for a while. He was waiting for um the Public Service Commission to address rate changes for electricity, for lighting. They did not on this session, so he released these things to us. But we know that Northwestern Energy has already put it on the docket for next year to have lighting looked at from um cost down points to the P S C. There are three sections. The northwest section, which is from Seventh Street Northwest and Seventh Avenue Northwest, north to Tenth Street and west to Eleventh Avenue Northwest. There is the northeast part of town, which is, comes up the hill and goes to Airport Road and starts uh Rice Avenue and finishes on Thirteenth Avenue. And then the southwest side of town, which starts at First Road Southwest, just south of the school, and goes all the way down to Second Street Southwest and goes from Seventh Avenue Southwest to Tenth Avenue Southwest. Jess over engineered these.
Mm-hmm.
So know that. The, so let's look at the area, the northwest side of town, you guys. If you look at it, there are currently thirteen streetlights in that section of town.
What kind of takes the, is it the red or?
The red or the currents.
So if you, if you go to page two, does it leave existing lights?
Okay.
Only pages three, four, five.
And then the next, but yeah, so for that northwest section of town, they are proposing we go from thirteen lights
forty-five.
to forty-five lights, so more than tripling it.
Tripped one more.
And again, this is the extreme, and we will go through public hearings and comments on this stuff in the spring. I just want it out there for some people, for people to start thinking about. Currently in our map and in their map, that we currently pay two hundred and oh, where'd it go? Two hundred and two dollars and thirty cent a month for those thirteen lights in the northwest side of town.
Two oh two thirty.
Two oh two thirty. If we were to update them for and put the thirty-nine new lights in, it would raise that sections of town to eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents. On the northeast side of town, which would be Airport, Rice and that, there are currently twenty lights up there, and they are talking about expanding it to thirty-nine lights. And the cost in that section of town would go from two oh two thirty as well to eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents. So the southwest side of town currently has seventeen lights. The new map shows forty-five lights, and that billing for that would go from a hundred and eighty-nine dollars a month to seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents a month.
And and.
And it's all, all that info's in your documents.
Yeah.
So this is just three sections of town. We've asked him if he would lay out the entire community for us on a big map, and Melody was here, and there should be an article, and I don't know if it's in today's account or not. But she was here and sat down with Jess when he brought this to us and walked it through us for us. Um we can do nothing and stay where we're at. We could add some lights or we could go maxed out. The other question that we'll look at as we get farther into this is if one section of town wanted it and another section of town did not want it, we would have to create a special improvement district for that side of town to take care of the costs of those lights. We also know that our our lighting assessment for next year's budget is gonna go up anyways because lighting is is due to it to go up, and we've been kind of getting close uh on our budget as is. All of these would be LED lights. They're all the down shaping, down.
Oh, Cobra heads.
Yeah, Cobra headlights. Um, so they are the the newest styles in that, but just in the five days we've had this or six days we've had this, this would be a hot topic. There are neighbors, Phyllis is over here shaking her head, yes. There are people, there are neighbors that want more lights, and there are neighbors who want no lights.
Lady, we'd buy a house because of the street light front.
Yeah, so this this is gonna be an interesting, an interesting conversation.
Did you see the bears coming?
Well, and to be honest with you, yeah, the southwest side and the northwest side of town were the two that had, they were, you know, F W P was worried about bears, you know, and those with the corridor, the river corridor, and then being close to Johnson's Field and all that other stuff for more light. Again, this, we're currently at this end of the rainbow. He's engineered it to this end of the rainbow. We have all of this area in here. We can decide on how we want to do it. And we will get into public hearings on this if I'm hoping in February. But there are maps down here at City Hall. You want to come take a peek at them and and take a look and go from there so you're ready to go come time for those public hearings. Councilman Kukoli, sorry it took me so long to get it here.
Not so good.
But um, yeah, I'm I'm stunned at the way people.
I know.
I know. It it is. I'm talking to some folks up on the hill. One guy's like, oh, yeah, I'm all over this. And his neighbor's like, no, you're not.
Well, my connection, my my name is like two stars.
Yeah, and and it's gonna come down to that. So we we may, it might be all for naught, but let's have the discussion and figure it out and so.
Well, it's not an all or none at all.
Correct. Oh, yeah, we can stay where we're at as a minimum. You could probably even get them, take some out if you wanted. I don't know. I didn't ask that question. Or you can go all, and we can go any, you know, anywhere in between the thirteen to forty-seven on these things, okay?
I think I estimated if we add all of the new lights, it'd be we have to add fifty percent of the budget on top.
On our current street light rate is forty-five cents?
Forty.
Forty, so it'd go to, it would go to um sixty.
If we add every.
Yeah, yeah. And and I will tell you that in two thousand I want to say it was two thousand sixteen, we talked about raising the rate to a dollar.
Well.
And for street lighting. And that, and that was to cover the cost of of something like this, and then to have money in the bank for repairs or et cetera. Um, and it never came to fruition. I can, I can maybe go back. I usually, stuff like that, rate increases, I usually keep minutes. I can probably go back and find them. But I think we were talking about raising it to a dollar, so raising it to sixty cents isn't nearly as extreme.
I'm also finding out when it, we come to our assessments, we're different than a lot of communities. We don't tie our assessments to the taxable evaluations of your homes. The only thing that is affected by the taxable evaluation of our homes is truly our general fund. Our street and road, our tree and sidewalk, and our lighting are all based on assessments. And we, for every dollar in assessment we raise, there's about a hundred and ten thousand linear feet of street frontage in Shoto. So if it raises a dollar, you raise another hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So these other communities out there that are looking at huge increases have their street and roads, their parks, everything hooked to the valuations of their homes where when they vote on something and say yes, they have no idea what it's gonna do to their taxes because they don't know what the valuation of their home is every other year. Where for us, if we raise something by a dollar and I have a hundred square, a hundred linear feet of street frontage at my house, my taxes are gonna go up a hundred bucks based on that dollar. So I have a meeting with the councilman from Missoula about this on Thursday because they're intrigued in the way we do things compared to tied it to the taxable evaluations, so.
So the the power bill for the uh for the lights is part of that.
The 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 current assessment you, we pay on our homes covers our streetlights bills, yes.
And some of the lights are in the alleys. I like, I just sold Haslam's house, and that streetlight they told me was on her like. So that's.
That could be, yeah, because if it's in the alleyway, it's not technically, it's been something that's been added.
There are, there are half a dozen or maybe even a dozen lights like that. Longs have one over um by their corrals. Uh, there's at least one.
We have one on our building on the south.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I want to say Sammons have one, too. I mean, there's, there's several of those that that they're to their own electricity.
We did that when we put the house on Airport Road. I had them put in a light and paid the fee, and then I paid it off over a ten-year plan as part of my lighting fee.
Right. But some of the, there's some streetlights are at the end of an alley, like in the Nova block. They, but they have the ones down in the alley, you know? I think one of them on our block is right there in the.
Yeah. So it's just, I want, again, I'm being proactive. And I want you guys to know that this is, was asked of us. We are working on it. And now is your time to start wrapping your mind around this and everything else we've got going on in this community and be ready for public hearings.
I think part of the budget discussion for this year, whether that next year would increase the planning costs for the energy.
Yeah.
We would potentially have a look at it. It's just for what we have.
Yeah. And the engineer told us to expect that. Expect some modicum of lighting increase from the Public Service Commission. It just depends upon do they go all in and take everything that Northwestern do wants, or do they find something in the middle?
The, all of our lives are currently on these.
They are. They they've changed them all out, yeah.
So right, right about the time we were talking about raising rates, I believe is the time they changed them out. And we were looking at raising rates, and the the difference was so great that we didn't need to.
Yeah.
If, if I remember the conversation correctly, that was a couple of times ago.
I know it's prolonged us not having to do it by having to change, with the change of the LED lights.
It did.
And note, it doesn't change in winter and summer. The same amount of usage. They're on, they're daylight activated, but it doesn't seem to make a difference. And it's not like we're on budget billing. We really don't see a difference in billing in the summer than we do in the winter. Nope.
I'm not sure. It's always within like the main streetlights are all on like one bill, and it's always within like sixty bucks or so.
Yeah, I'm well, I I thought we'd see a big, you know, you know, because it's dark at what, one in the afternoon now. So, yeah, so, okay. So anyways, that's, yeah, that's what I, I want that out there. And he's now at Pierced City Hall, and if you run out, we can make some more, but come take a peek if you're in those three areas. As Jess gets us another map, hopefully a citywide map, um we'll get it printed and get it out here for comment and for people to know. But we'll keep you up to date as we get closer to February, and when we're gonna do public hearings on this. Next item then would be claims.
Move and pay the fines?
I'll say it.
I have a motion from councilman Merja and a second from councilwoman Kukoli to pay the bills.
I did have one question.
Yes.
There was the, was it L W C F payment that was our matching, right, for the grant? Uh, so the city doesn't incur any actual cost. We're kind of pass through, so to pay the the bill. That's right. Okay. And then it's the L W C F. So then L W C F is fifty, and I don't know why I'm pulling fifty.
I feel this.
But we were kind of a middle man on that grant.
We're Switzerland.
Yeah, got, yeah. We couldn't do this or not.
Right.
And and I, it was sticking back there, and I'm like, so what is the? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Pay the bills, Tom. Um, councilman, anything from your neck to the woods?
Saturday was fun. It was just, it it felt good. There was, and and it wasn't, and and I mean, I'm not, I'm not belittling what Tira did. City looked amazing, but it felt like everybody was excited about it. Um, the kids were happy and running around, even though it was windy. The people standing outside at the Legion's fire pit were joking and goofing around. It was, there was nobody yelling at each other and Santa's workshop. It just felt good.
So I'm not complaining.
Um, the other thing I've got is uh Tira and I have been talking about the skate park because she's interested. I'm interested. We've both been talking to um the the funds out there that give money and like that. And so Drew, I'm gonna kind of loop you in on this. You guys want wheels to stay off the the Lions Club courts? Help us get a skate park.
Find a way to get a skate.
And I'm, and I'm not saying like monetarily. You, you guys, you guys know, you guys know how to talk to people and get buy-in. So help, help us learn how to do that. Be, because I I've had, this, this is the fourth time I've had somebody talk to me about it. And and I'm a little burned out on it. I think it's a great idea, and I think it needs to happen, but but I don't know how to make it happen.
I'm not sure.
And and the the money's there. I mean, it, when I looked at it three years ago, it was gonna cost the city about fifteen thousand dollars. For a five hundred thousand dollar budget. So anyway, that's, we're, we're working on that. We, we wanted to get through the stroll. But hopefully this spring, we will start talking to people and having meetings and and have information out there for people. And that's what I got.
Councilman Howard?
I had a new experience this week, last week.
Do I want to know?
I'm performing a service call on the other side of that town.
Okay.
I just, you know, run in and out of the house. I leave the doors of my truck open and come out. I got chickens roosting in my truck.
Oh, did you get pictures?
Oh, I should have. So I'm just saying the next time that free-range chickens are in the city limits, there's no bag quota once they're in my truck. They're going home with me.
Shut the door.
You're happy, too.
As long as it's not a sheep, but it's still illegal to ride along in a vehicle with a sheep in the front seat.
Anything else? You have to the fire department tonight?
Maybe.
Okay, I know I'm heading up there when it's done here. Councilman?
I don't have anything. The throwing of the candy at the parade lights kind of gave me a little agita. And I've weakened, I was reminded by many people that I've weakened over the years of not doing daycare because they all attested that they had seen me do far dangerous things with other people's children. Maybe we can revisit that next year. And I know it, it's just an easy fix to just ask people not to send or throw candy, but.
I would tell you that the mayor's wife would probably come on board to have something, say you can't throw candy back into the flunk. She took a, she took a Snickers bar right about here from somebody throwing it into the floor.
At the time, there was thousands of cookies ingested by thousands, hundreds of little children around the town.
The sugar was pretty high.
All day long, and the marshmallows and the hot chocolate and the spice cider. I think, yeah, it got a little.
Sugar-free Christmas.
And not necessarily sugar-free, but I think at that point of the day, we can cut them all off.
So you want us to throw a candy gun down and then?
The throwing the candy was a little scary.
Well, and it's, it's hard in the dark.
Oh, yeah. No, and those flashing lights.
That were driving the vehicles with all the lights on them would probably add a little bit of a
Oh, I.
disadvantage as well.
And you can't, if you get too far apart, then you got a mile-long parade, and I'm striving, I know I'm on the back of the ambulance with flashing lights in front of me, flashing lights on top of me, flashing lights behind me. The next thing you know, Tammy's like this, and I'm, I'm, and she's like, I got hit with a Snickers.
It was a lot of candy, and it was just scary.
Yeah, well, my daughter came home and said, oh, I got candy at the parade. And I'm like, we're throwing candy at the.
I don't.
Everybody.
Usually wince at things like that. I'm like, yeah, little kids.
I winced at night because it was dark. If it was daylight, it's easier to see. I agree.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. You're a mean one, Mrs. Grinch.
Good.
From my desk, we're gonna be busy, busier than we have been. It's been busy here at City Hall. Um, with the pending departure of Mike, it's going to be even more. So we will have Mike's position out internally, hopefully by the end of business tomorrow. And then we will get it out externally as well. Well, um, I want to have it ready to go externally in case we don't get anybody internally. So we're just waiting for his job description to be approved by the H R people at M M I A for us. Um, I'm sad, but I'm happy.
Wish him all the best.
I do wish him all the best, and I would tell any of the employees that if you're doing it for the right reasons, come see me. I will write you a letter of recommendation, you know, because you are doing it for the right reasons. Uh, we sent the, on the other topic, we sent the letter off to FEMA today per their request. Come to find out the address on the letter from FEMA didn't have the right zip code and stuff, so we had to do some work on that. Um, what I also found interesting, and I have it up on here at the screen, is from Muscle Sho County D E S and Roundup, where FEMA is beginning to purchase properties in the floodway within the town of Roundup. Roundup has been hit hard several times in recent years by the Muscle Sho. And you, the, this is. And you the this is on Muscle Sho County D E S's Facebook page. It talks about the acquisition or the eligibility for acquisition from these. And uh. I would hope we would never have to go through something like this in Shoto, but. It's strange. We had a lot of signatures on our letter. We had um. Folks come in inside the county or inside the town, outside the town. Um. They know that we have opportunities to come to comment in person after the first of the year, but we did get our letters out on time. Dogs again, people. I just don't know what to do when it comes to dogs.
And you can love all animals.
Oh, yeah, for that matter, all animals. You got to do a better job of keeping dogs in your yard. You know, and I I. Clint Buck had a or not Kyle had a dog at his house. There was dogs over on the southwest side of town or the northeast side of town running around. I don't know. I've owned dogs my entire life and I've never been that type of a dog owner. I've always been able to know where my dogs were at all time. And. It's going to come to a head as we start getting ready to look at it come spring again. So please, and as temperatures drop, dogs the same way, you know, we've got to do a better job of taking care of our animals. Um. Let me think. Other than that, I think that's where we're at. We're I think we're caught up. It was a busy day here at City Hall today. Um, it's been busier with people coming in for that, looking at maps and things like that. So our doors are open. We are no longer closed during the lunch hour, correct? We found that a lot of folks on their lunch hours want to come get things done, so we're rotating so that we always have somebody here at lunch. Um. Look for a change in our Facebook page coming probably the first of the year. We will continue to have the Facebook page that I post on on a day to day basis. But we're also going to change and do a page specifically for updates, for service updates and things like that. We get to the point where that page now gets so many posts that finding something from the city is more and more difficult.
Do you know how to do feature code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and you can tag everybody by once, by one little thing, but. We're going to. Tira and Shawna and Tom and I are sitting down trying to figure out how we can set up a different page to just service related things.
You can also do an ad highlight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a new feature.
We've been doing that. We've been pinning some of those things to the top and that, but.
Okay.
By the time if I post something at eight in the morning and we have something else going on, there could be ten posts over the top of that by the time somebody goes back to see it. So we're trying to figure out a way just to. Separate news from service and things like that. Okay? Um, other than that, I have nothing else. Rich, you got anything for us? Brian Colesworthy, Flood Plane Administrator, Copper Creek Owner, Chamber Commerce Guru, nothing under any of those three hats. I enjoyed the Bob Marshall pint thing uh Friday night.
It was fun.
Uh, up there. Um, thank you for the Bob Marshall Wilderness Foundation.
Yeah, they want to start doing it. Um, they were talking about doing it quarterly.
Okay. Um, they are based in Whitefish, but I was told that they are working with the Lewis Clark National Forest to get office space here. And it is in their M O U with them that if they can do it, they can get space in the. War Service Building, so um. I met a lot of good folks there that night as well. Basketball season is up and running for a couple of days before Christmas break. Um, we're trucking as best as we can. I have nothing else for you guys, so if nobody else has got anything, we would go till nineteen December. Phyllis, you got anything for us? Nope. Anybody? All right, you guys. Good night, everybody. Thank you, and we'll be back on nineteen December.